We see. He's not here. Edward, I see that you're here.
President.
Kevin McNeil. Nicholas, I'm here. Mayor Kramer? He's here. Tom Lennon? No. Agnes? Thank you. And Iris Kislin. Iris, did you get on? We can't hear you, Bob. Robert, you're muted. Can you tell me whether Iris is able to get on?
Robert is muted. Yeah, he's only muted himself.
Okay.
We're not hearing him.
At the moment Iris is not with us.
Didn't see this. Whoa, who's that?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. The schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been placed in the library's vestibule and are available. Wow, they're probably not available to most people at the reference desk, but they are there.
See what she did? Soon she heard me, she just buried her face in them.
We will now... I'd like to open this meeting to public comments. Robert? Now is the time for the public comment.
This is gonna be a good idea.
Okay, you're speaking, but I can't hear you.
You always see yourself, even if you have...
I'm not talking.
Yeah.
Scroll over the button.
He has to unmute himself.
Your video...
Robert muted.
Robert muted, your video stopped.
Papa! Where's meeting?
She's watching a meeting of the town council.
No, library board.
Certainly, the library board. Excuse me.
Lily's asking where you are.
I'm here. I'm right here, Liliana.
Excuse me. There's a man and a woman. Excuse me.
The local representative of the county.
We can hear you.
I've got my campus going.
The person who just said I got my campus going. We can hear you.
All right, I have to leave the meeting. How do I do that?
Hold on.
How do I get out of here?
Is there a member of the public who would like to speak at this time?
Am I a member of the public?
Yes, you are.
Should I just say what I want to say, or...
Yes. Yes, you're on.
Okay, good. Well, I'm, you know, Bob Metler's wife. And, as you know, he just passed away. So, I would like to donate a lot of his books. He has maps, books, cards, that are all historical in nature. And I think they'll be very useful if the public can share them and benefit from them. And if, you know, I spoke to the mayor, and if there is a project that will honor him, I would like to be a part of it. And that's what I would like to say.
We thank you, and certainly, well, for condolences. I, being somewhat new in Franklin Township, I never met your husband, although I heard much about him from people who knew him from his service on the zoning boards. Now, this is certainly a donation that should come to the library, and we certainly want to do everything we can to curate it properly.
Yeah.
And the first step of that would be to find out just what's involved, so we can determine what effort on the part of the library would be required to do it up and properly, according to best museum practices. Even though it's a library, this is the museum part of the library. This is history part. So...
Nick's cut off again. And Nick, you're buffering. We're having some technical difficulties. Are you still there?
Hello? Yes, I'm here.
Yeah. Waiting for Nick to come back on. Edward, I see you're still there.
To the media. Mr. President, may I speak? Yes. So, I've known Bob Metler for probably 15... I've been here 21 years. Must have met him within the first five years of working here. And he was an integral part of Franklin. The Metlers are an integral part of Franklin for hundreds of years. Obviously, you know, we have deep respect for anyone who has a road named after them, because that means their family's been there for hundreds of years. O'Neil Park was once the Metler's property. The Huntington Forest was once their property. The land around the Metler House that extends down to the firehouses was once their property. And Bob himself, you know, he's a Republican, but Democrats would always appoint him to the planning board, historic commission, because it was just too... First of all, he cared about Franklin more than he cared about the party. And he was just, you know, he just couldn't deny that knowledge that he had. So, not only do I think this is a good thing and a good project, and a room to contribute to what that, but I don't want to make a motion right now, because I'm just springing it on me. We don't have the full committee. But I also think the historic room at the library should be named after Mr. Metler. He was the town historian officially for decades, and I think he was 30, 30 years or more. Maybe Aruna will know better that he... I may have lost Aruna. But for at least 30 years, he was in continuous service to the town, and I would like to see the historic room named after him.
Mr. President, I think we lost Aruna.
At this time, I think the most appropriate course of action would be to find out what's involved, what is the content of the collection of historic maps, books, and papers. And then we can decide just how and where they're going to be integrated into the library.
You know, I think I will have to... If I may say so, I'll need to meet somebody to, you know, explain all that and show the things, or I can bring them to the library. There are deeds, you know, there are old deeds. There's a lot of very valuable things that would really benefit the town. So, if you can arrange for me to meet someone and explain all that, that would help.
We should do that right now.
That would be a hurry.
Yeah, I know, right now we don't do it.
Well, we can... January, we can have somebody look at the collection and determine how much space is involved and all that.
But how are we gonna do that?
I think we have to wait until the virus comes.
I think so, too.
Right, right.
Aruna, can you tell me approximately how much stuff would... How many books, or how many maps, how many... The volume?
Oh, my God. He has a very sizable collection of Lincoln. I mean, any book that was ever written on him, George Washington, books like that. Lot of historical books.
You know how many?
And there are deeds that involved the Demart Lane, Metler's Lane, and a lot of the deeds that are very old, and some of the books are very old also. And maps, I would say, probably, I'm just guessing, I haven't counted, about 20 maps. And there's a lot of other articles, things like that, photographs. So, not sure. Maybe I'll sort of relook at it, and can I get back to you? Because are you asking in terms of space, or...
Yeah, space. Space. And also if they've already had some, any kind of a preservation done to them, or are they just...
Yeah, no, no preservation, but there are lots of cards, you know, historic cards of the local community and all that. So...
I think if you have an idea of, like, you know, how much room it would take up, like, you know, two feet by three feet, or if it's just a smaller collection, or a bigger collection? How...
You know, it will also depend on what you guys decide to take.
Yes, yes.
You know? So, I think what I will do is, I will try to put something together, and if someone comes and looks at it, because I don't want to bring it and then take it back.
Right.
And I will try to get photographs and everything together. So, it'll take me a while, and of course, you're not ready because of the virus anyway.
Sure.
So, yeah, that would be very nice.
We are very appreciative of...
Yeah.
We are very appreciative of your offer, and we... I feel that this has to be in our library. And certainly, we're looking forward to, when things are clearer, to have somebody come out, some...
Right.
Somebody, staff of the museum come out and look it over, and we'll go from there.
Yes. And I will try to organize everything so that, you know, it's easy for...
Again, thank you very much.
...work to come, or whoever wants to come, they can look at it, and then, you know, we can take it from there. Thank you, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the offer.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll help with whatever you need to do, I will help with it.
Appreciate that.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak at this time?
I don't see anybody else.
I would like to... Okay. Seeing no one else, I'd like to close the... This session, public session of the meeting. Now, next item of business is acceptance of the minutes from our April 22 meeting. I believe we've all gotten copies and read them. Is there a motion to accept? Edward, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A comment? Can I make a comment there? Because I was not absent for that meeting. I don't know why. And I was present for the last meeting.
I'm sorry, Agnes, I'll fix that.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'll correct the motion. I've moved to accept the minutes with corrections.
Second.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the acceptance of the minutes, besides the correction of the roll call? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote, those in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Please signify. All right. I see four ayes. The motion has passed, and it seems to be anonymous. Moving along to the director's report, reports. January, would you like to comment on your two sets of reports?
Do you want to do the financial first? It's pretty unexciting, but that's the way it should be.
This was in the... Trustees have... Most trustees have received a copy of the financial reports. Is there any discussion on the financial status of our library? Seeing none. January, would you like to go on to the program report? These financial reports will be stored away for audit.
Okay. Okay. So, even though we're closed, we've been very busy online, particularly the young adult librarian. She's had several virtual teen programs. She had a virtual poetry jam contest. She started another online contest in May. She's been moving with the teen advisory group and doing things essentially that way. We've also had 11 storytimes on our website, YouTube, and the members of the staff have been working on the summer reading, which will be towards virtual. But there was some logistics with how people would get prizes and things like that, but they've worked that out. And that's basically it. Just very active online, doing the best we can to make people know that we're out here. Oh, the other thing was that our digital...
Wow, yeah.
Really jumped. Five percent increase of our digital circulation. And we've been monitoring that very closely and trying to buy more stuff, so people have more things to read.
Thank you, January. Next item is president's report, and I'd like to read my report. Mayor Kramer has informed us that COVID-19 conditions have cast a cloud over the library's future income. If the township assessed value decreases, our funding will decrease proportionally. Currently, our library operates at a cost of $53 per person per year, compared to more than $90 per person per year for the rest of Somerset County. We stand committed to serve the township with a main library, a southern branch, and in the near future, a third branch on Lewis Street. All of this demands that we allocate our resources carefully, and the numbers show that we do. There is, however, one area where we are not spending wisely, and that is on the rent and taxes for the southern branch. For the past three years, the director and the trustees, with your enthusiastic support, and that of several other township officials, have endeavored to find a suitable piece of land to build a new and larger southern branch that we will own and control. Ownership of a 5,000-square-foot building will save us about $100,000 per year and provide larger space with a program room. The plan underway is to invest a portion of our capital reserve funds by purchasing land and a building for a new southern branch, and building a new southern branch. In round numbers, this investment of about $3.1 million can save us $100,000 per year, a return on investment of 3.2 percent. We currently have this money invested at about 1 percent. If we get the state grant, the return on investment on our outlay will be much higher. Our engineering firm has surveyed a two-acre parcel that the Board of Education has agreed to sell for the proposed new branch. More work has to be done to prepare for a required subdivision. We have asked the engineers, the Reynolds Group, to cease work on the subdivision plans. It is my hope that when the COVID-19 conditions and regulations permit, that we can restart the path toward subdivision, a council designation for library use, purchase of the land, and construction. I therefore ask this board and the township to support the goal of proceeding cautiously, but in a timely manner, to make this happen. If there is a significant reduction in library funding, adjustments will have to be made. Freeing up $100,000 from the operating budget will help. Thank you.
So, what exactly are you asking to do? Are you asking to proceed?
Nick? At this time, I'm asking to consider this. And as it says, when conditions permit, we want to start... At this point, I don't think it's time to move for any continuation, but rather, I made this statement to ask for support when the time comes. And...
We apply support when the time comes.
Thank you. Correspondence and communication. January?
I know. You've got, some of you, not all of you, edited three articles this time. The happiest one was the one about McNamara ending their ebook embargo. And then we have another one about the COVID-19 outbreaks sparking a digital shift for public libraries, which we've seen happen here.
Yep.
And then another one about virus concerns from the publishing industry. So, when you have a chance, if you can read these, I think they'll be very interesting. Another aspect of how the pandemic affects the library in different ways.
Yeah, that was a great article. I wish I could get a chance to read it when I go to my office. We're in a same situation, Franklin Township. I advise all my media specialists, when they look at their budget for next year, really start looking at digital media versus, you know, hard textbook. Because, you know, right now, we're 100% remote learning. 95% of our family members in our school district have a device and either have internet connection from Comcast or a hotspot that we provided for them. So, we're planning for next September, depending on state guidelines. So, you know, we have to prepare, if we're still doing remote learning next year, let's say in September, until there's a vaccine and we get the clearance, or some type of hybrid situation, we want to have enough digital library resources available for our students. So, we're doing the same. We're really preparing, looking at more digital resources, ebooks, et cetera. Yeah.
And what percentage of the population, did you say, has access?
Right now, we did a survey. We actually deliver 1,500 additional Chromebooks, so one-to-one from grade six through eight. We provided hot spots to families in need. We recommended all the various Comcast Accentrals, all the various programs. So, we're continuing with probably about 95%. You know, we're just small pockets, but the last couple of months, we did a lot of work, really connecting with families to get internet access, or a device, so either or. Yep.
It's a big project.
Yes. Yep.
Commendable. Thank you. Is there any old business? Seeing none, let's move on to some new business. January, you have a proposal for a temporary budget? Would you like to talk about this?
Well, I'll use a term that's used a lot lately. This is aspirational. This is... What I did with this was, I cut the number of fines we're taking here. I cut our DVD memberships, and I cut our computer income. I did leave the township appropriation untouched. I left the gate untouched. I have no idea. I can't look into the future. Wish I could. And what I did was, we came up, I came up with a budget that's actually $201,000. Be spending less, that amount less than... Less, be spending less than what we'd taken. So, what I said in my introduction to it was that I thought, if you did approve it, then we should look at it again in October, because we would know much more by October. And I did, what I usually do with these things is I look at every line, I look at what we spent during the past year, some got lowered, some got raised. One of the big factors in this was the mandatory minimum wage increase that I can't avoid. I have to do it. And what was basically...
January, are you looking for a motion to approve this budget at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any comments on this budget?
This is just a proposed budget.
Seeing no comments, would anyone like to make a motion to accept this proposed budget?
So move.
The second.
Is there a second?
I have a second to it.
I'm sorry, is there a second?
I have a second to it.
Yeah. Yeah, Agnes, second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. I would ask for a vote to approve the motion. Those in favor, raise their hand, please. One, two. Agnes? Three? Okay, there are four. Yes, votes. Yes. Other new business, every once in a while, we have, we've had executive sessions, which means that the minutes of these executive sessions were not available to the public. After a period of time, it behooves us, and it's actually required, that we release these from secrecy. And the proposal here is to release the executive session minutes from February 27 of 2019, March 27, June 26, September 25, October 23, November 20, and January 22 of 2020. These executive sessions dealt with property acquisition. And it's no longer a secret, since the Board of Education has agreed to sell us the piece of property we were discussing. One of these... So, is there a motion to release these? Philip, you have your hand up. Is that... Okay, Philip moves to accept, to release, and Agnes has her hand up for second, to second it. Any discussion on this motion? Any discussion on this motion?
I don't.
Seeing none. This motion, please vote to, those in favor of passing this motion, please raise your hand. Okay, this motion has passed. There's four affirmative votes. Is there any other new business? Okay, our, our next meeting date will be June 24th, 2020. And it may be a Webex meeting.
Let's hope not.
And it's possible that things will be, conditions will be such that we can have a, an actual face-to-face meeting. So June 24th, 5:45 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is that Ed?
That's Edward, yes.
Ed, is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Kramer.
Mayor Kramer. Any discussion about adjournment? Seeing none, those in favor of adjourned, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I see.
See you later, everybody. Bye-bye.
Goodbye.
All right.